Good evening. Welcome to the March fifteenth Merrimack School Board meeting. Please rise and join me with for the Pledge of Allegiance. On the agenda is public participation. Before we get started, I just wanted to say that even though we are back in person here in the Matthew Thornton Room for our school board meetings as we have for the last several meetings, we understand that many community members may not feel comfortable coming here in person. Therefore, we will continue to allow public comments to be sent to us in an email for the foreseeable future. To do this, you may send an email to publiccomments@sa26.org. Again, the email address is publiccomments@sa26.org. We do require your name and your address for the record on such documentation. Based on the amount of information we received tonight, our goal is always to read off verbatim the comments as we receive them. If the comments become too heavy in volume, we would just have to not read public comment into testimony. It's really an all or nothing proposition. It's only happened once that we haven't been able to read all public comments. But regardless, we will put all public comments in our minutes for tonight's meeting. We just can't read them tonight if we can't read all of them. And public comments, anyone in the room have any public comments? If so, just go up to the microphone and state your name and your address. Seeing none, do we have any public comments in the email?
Yes, we do. We're opening, bear with me on my phone. The first is from Barbara Souza of Four Griffin Street. "I wanted to send a quick thank you for getting these kids back to school. My big kids have really struggled being remote and being back in school has put the light back in their eyes. They are excited to be in the classroom. I know these decisions are hard to make and you will never make everyone happy, so thank you from this mom of four, Barbara Souza." Next is from, I have this scrolling to do, so bear with me. Steve Miller, forty-two Belmont Drive. "I applaud your narrow decision to transition to in-classroom instruction next month for certain grades. The school year is about halfway done. The State Department of Education advised me today that," and this was by the way back on February nineteenth, "that SAU twenty-six hasn't done any assessment tests for 2020. I'd like to know how we will know where they stand until we do. If our kids are behind, we don't need to extend the school day in year, eliminate vacations, and get caught up? Promoting our kids' upper grade without completing the previous grade accomplishes nothing. The most recent tests taken in 2019 indicated our high school students were above the state average in English and slightly below in math. I doubt that's the case in 2021. The CDC just issued an advisory regarding COVID transmission. They show no high risks in the classroom. Going forward, I'd like to see a plan to administer the tests and react to the results." And again, this was from February nineteenth because there was a recall, and it looked like it was a complete recall of the message, and what it was, was the first version didn't have his address, the second version did. So we are making good at tonight's meeting. So thank you for your understanding, Mr. Miller. Next, we have Cindy McLaughlin from Two Cranston Circle. And bear with me because it was a reply, it was missing originally, an address. "Dear school board members, I am ready to have the school board consider allowing outside groups to utilize the Merrimack High School track this summer. I have been a Merrimack taxpayer for over twenty-three years and I currently own a business, (in parentheses) Reacher Peak Running LLC, that would like to operate a youth running camp on weekday mornings for select weeks. I would like to utilize the Merrimack High School track to operate this camp in my own town primarily, serving our town's youth ages ten to fifteen. I do understand the state of society in which we live. However, many summer outdoor day camps are scheduled to occur and our children need a safe place to be as well as an outlet for their physical energy. My morning running camps will provide this for a pivotal age group as well as teaching them about physical fitness and running as a sport. I have inquired with facilities a couple of times and have been told that the camp run by an outside group may not be permissible this year. I would like the school board to comment as to why that is the case when the camp is outdoors and it is still possible to maintain social distancing. How is this different than the town's Parks and Recreation Department opening our soccer fields or softball fields to other outside groups? I'm aware that other towns are opening their tracks to their taxpayers and other outside businesses, so I want to understand why Merrimack is holding back and/or if this loosening of a restriction has not been considered or prioritized. I hope my letter can bring attention to this and ultimately my camps can serve a need for the kids of, in our community right here in the town of Merrimack. If the board will not consider opening the track to outside groups or organizations at all this year, I will welcome a definitive response so I can pursue other venues in other towns. Thank you for your time, Cindy McLaughlin, owner, Reacher Peak Running." And there was one more. From Lisa Mongoven at fourteen Lamson Drive. "Good afternoon," and this is from March twelfth. "I just wanted to address the school board in regards to quarantine guidelines of fourteen days that is in place for students and staff who are traveling. I know that in the community, there is a concern that fourteen days, this is too much, much too lengthy, sorry. Governor Chris Sununu has just announced that quarantine for travel is optional now. In regards to health and safety for staff and students, I would encourage the school board to at least modify the fourteen-day quarantine to the recommendations given by the CDC to test and monitor for seven days or quarantine for ten days upon return from travel. It is of the utmost importance to still recognize that we are not out of this pandemic yet and we are still waiting for many in our community to be vaccinated, including teachers this month. Thank you for taking the time to read my concerns, Lisa Mongoven." And just one more check, and it looks like we are caught up.
Thank you, Shannon. Moving on to number four, which is recognition of community support. Rotary Club of Merrimack, United Way of Greater Nashua and Residence, Mark McLaughlin.
So, thank you. I thought tonight it would be nice to share with the board and the community some, just a few examples of the ways that our community has really supported us. Just as a point of historical fact, it was a year ago tonight, by days, I think, that we had a special meeting where we convened to address the board's request to have food service provided to students as we shut down our, our schools. So we've been at this for a long time now and we couldn't have done what we've been able to do without the support of our, our community. So just want to point out a couple of groups in particular. Mike Apfelberg, President of the United Way of Greater Nashua, and his organization donated six thousand K-95 masks to the Merrimack School District. That is a game changer. And we are working with our leadership team to be able to have a plan for distribution of them and, but, but I, I spoke to Mike directly and thanked him on behalf of the administration and I knew that the board would want that as well. But we're really grateful to the United Way of Greater Nashua and Mike for his leadership in providing our district with that, that really significant gesture. Also want to point out Maureen Mooney, the, from the Rotary Club of Merrimack. She and the Rotary Club of Merrimack provided, I wonder if Matt has that number? I had it and then I, I lost it, but maybe a thousand cloth masks happened to be-
There were, there were, the Rotary Club, the, the N-95s?
Yeah.
It was a total of six thousand.
No, the Rot-, that's the United Way.
Okay, United Way?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, it could be a thousand.
I think it was. I happen, I just would say that I happened to be on the phone in my car in the parking lot as Maureen Mooney was bringing in box after box after box after box. And it's incredibly helpful. They were geared more to elementary grades because of their size and of course those have been distributed. So again, our thanks to the Rotary Club of Merrimack and Maureen Mooney. Not just Maureen, but she certainly has been a, a major supporter of that initiative. Also Wendy Thomas was the coordinator of the Handmade Mask Project that happened last fall and, and delivered a huge number. She coordinated that group and delivered them to the district and provided them to us, which then we were able to distribute. And also Jessica Perez, a, a parent in the district, provided us with communicator masks. Those would be the masks that are, you can see mouths and be able to lip read if you needed to or be able to better see the person communicating with you. And we are incredibly grateful. They were distributed primarily through special education for those students who need them. So I think what we're going to try to do from now through, you know, the remainder of the year is, is just to continue to highlight those groups and individuals who really partnered with us and without being asked, just stepped up. We're really grateful to them. So we thought it'd be a nice way to start the meeting tonight by just pointing those, those, those folks and those organizations out to you. So thanks to all of them.
Yes, thanks very much to our community for the support that we've gotten and this in many other ways through this, these challenging times. Anyone in the board have any comments or questions? All right, we will move on to number five, which is information regarding regional and state-run vaccination clinics for school employees. So that is Dr. Mark McLaughlin and Melissa Gagnon.
So I'm going to turn it to Melissa Gagnon, our Human Resources Manager, in just a minute because she's been doing great, great work on this. But just by way of connecting or introducing, so one of the things that we've learned a lot in this last year is how quickly things change. And so we have to be really agile and pay attention to every email and news conference that happens because they announce changes pretty quickly. So, so one of the things that is very exciting is the prospect of being able to fast-track vaccinations for educators in New Hampshire. That's a great, great thing. And those, there are, we've learned a number of ways that that could happen. The state through state-run clinics and then also regional sites and then what's called closed sites that would be specific to a, a school district to, to provide vaccinations for district employees. Every school district in the state is connected to regions. Merrimack is designated with the Greater Nashua Public Health Network or region. And so we are working in coordination with them and we cannot do things faster than we're allowed to do under, under them because they're the providers of the vaccine and so on. So what we've communicated to our staff is that they may have friends and colleagues in other districts that have already had clinics and wonder, well, why here? And it's, it's entirely dependent on the clinic and the, the region rather. And I think that it's, you know, it's complicated stuff. And so we're grateful for the partnership with Greater Nashua and are waiting for guidance from them as to what we're able to do or not do. But in the meantime, we've communicated to our staff that lacking the ability to have a regional clinic or a closed-site clinic, that our staff can begin to register starting, I think, the seventeenth. And so that's just by way of introduction, but Melissa has been working with them closely and has a little bit more to share.
Thank you, and thank you for having me here this evening. So this is a work in progress as are many things these days. So points of transparency, Wednesday, March seventeenth is the date that anyone in Phase Two A, which is K through twelve school staff, and there is a one-page flyer that was sent with the board packet as well as to our staff last week that highlights these important dates. One date that was on there was March twelfth and that was specific to those closed sites that Dr. McLaughlin talked about briefly. The date we want to highlight right now is Wednesday, March seventeenth. So anyone in K-12 school staff, so all of our employees, including substitutes, can sign up on Wednesday, March seventeenth at www.vaccines.nh.gov. Appointments start through the state on Monday, March twenty-second. This is not the end of this part. We are actively working with public health. We're actively outreach-ing to anyone that we can to possibly set up a clinic of our own. What we've seen with Phase One B is there is an impact to staff relating to absences when they have their vaccine. They aren't sure of side effects, so typically they'll schedule themselves a half-day to go get their vaccine. If there are any side effects, they may take the next day or the next couple of days off. So if this plan happens where our staff get vaccinated through the state-run clinics, there are many appointments available to them. So there will be probably over the span of a couple of weeks, some weeks where our absences are certainly higher than others. So I will make an active plug that if there are any community members looking to be a substitute in the district, we have plenty of openings for substitutes. I will also add, what to bring, I think is important for our community members and our staff to hear that are listening. You have to bring a driver's license with you to your appointment or a non-driver ID. Your employee badge you also have to bring. If you are a substitute that's not currently working, you are also eligible for the vaccine. A list of active substitutes was provided to Public Health, Greater Nashua Public Health. And I can also provide a letter stating that you are a substitute with the district. So I do think those are important to note. And if you are interested, again, in being a substitute for the district, please reach out to Human Resources or apply on our website. But those are the important points. Are there any questions or anything else you'd like to add?
Seeing Shannon.
Do you know if bus drivers are being afforded the opportunity for the vaccine under that umbrella as well?
Yes, they were on, so Greater Nashua Public Health asked us to supply a list to them of kind of anyone who services in a regular capacity. So unfortunately not, you know, the regular UPS delivery driver would not fall under that category, but bus drivers, substitutes, and staff as well, so yes.
Because they're specifically not on our, I know we would have substitutes in our HR software, but we would not have our bus drivers.
Correct, yes, we were able to get that list.
Great, wonderful. That was my question.
Lori?
Are you on? Lori?
So thank you for all your hard work. I know what this is really fluid situation and I know Nashua Public Health is working with a lot of area school districts, but I hope that we can still like partner maybe with Merrimack, you know, Fire Department. I know that's what one school district did as a site to get teachers vaccinated. So thank you for your work and I hope that we continue to try to push forward.
Absolutely.
Can I just come in on that? Matt, you had a conversation, I think, if you could just speak to, to what a board member, Roth House, was just referring to?
Yeah, I spoke to the fire chief, Matt Duke, and he essentially said it was the responsibility of Greater Nashua Public Health to do that and they wouldn't be coordinating anything. And then I reached out to the Emergency Management Director, John Manuelli, and he referred me to Matt Duke, who I've already spoken to. Also spoken to Nashua Public Health, exchanged some emails, got no response.
So we, I've, you know, we've reached out to the point of just, you know, everybody's doing their best and everybody's working really hard. You know, we all have really tried to aggressively reach out to Greater Nashua Public Health so that we can just make sure that, you know, they know we're here and if there's a way to schedule something, that we will try to do that. But, you know, we can't produce the vaccine. We have to be given it by some entity and that's what we're kind of waiting on now. So, you know, we're continuing to try to reach out to state and regional and local partners and, you know, we'll just keep doing it until, until the point at, until we get to the point where either that happens or else we just reach a critical mass of people being served under the, you know, the state-run clinic sites.
And-
So, so just, I get that. I would say as a response to maybe the town manager, because Matt Duke is just a newly appointed fire chief, so maybe he doesn't have enough background to, to understand like that we do need to partner. So Paul McCally is going to be the new town manager and I think he would help support you.
I know Paul well, so I can call him up in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see, I saw Shannon first and then Andy.
Well, it was just a follow-on, another question I forgot to ask is, could we possibly leverage the charter school that we have in Merrimack to say if we can invite them? And I think Dover did that where they had some charter schools and that gave that power and numbers. And of course, you know how the Concord likes charter schools, so I was hoping that might, or maybe private schools, but there's South Merrimack, if we can invite those in. Would that give us a, a collective and a number that would get us to a critical mass that we might get better attention?
We've made it very clear that we will do whatever we need to do.
Gotcha.
So we're waiting to be partnered with.
Great. Thank you.
Andy.
Just a passing observation in seeing all these closed sites that did it over the last week, you know, or so. One thing that struck out to me is Hudson had a closed site. So I'm curious if, I'm assuming they're part of the national, national or regional. I'm just curious how they went about doing it and what they did. It might be an interesting, if you haven't had the discussion, it might be an interesting discussion. So I know-
Yeah, go ahead.
I think Hudson had a conversation with their Emergency Management Director and their Fire Department, who acted as volunteers, and so that's how they got that done. We've had the same conversation. Now I'll elevate it to Paul McCally.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I just reiterate one thing that Melissa said that's very important. One of the advantages of having a closed site is that you can try to select a day that works. So let's say maybe a Friday or Saturday or something where you can manage the absences or the impact rather of, on schools. The challenge, if we can't get that, is that we're going to have a number of staff who are going to get a date and a time, whenever they get the date and time. And we're certainly not going to deny anybody access to a vaccine. But from a pure management of the schools, that theoretically presents a significant challenge in the next couple of weeks and then a few weeks after that, when those people go for their second. So as has been the story throughout this past year, you know, there's always more to the story and more complications. So as much as today's a pretty big day, we have our, our elementary students back for the first time, those who wanted to, and that's a good thing. And as we approach the next few weeks, when we're doing a good thing about getting a vaccine, it creates a staffing challenge if we're not able to call the shots about when that will be. So it, you know, we're just going to continue to ask for everyone's patience in terms of trying to deal with the impacts of that. But remember, it's a good thing that's happening and we're just going to try to make the most of that and understand there are going to be a few little bumps under the carpet potentially as we get to that point. So just think it's important to reiterate what Melissa said there.
Thank you. Andy?
So just to summarize, you said earlier you want all the teachers on the Wednesday to go and schedule and things. If you do end up with a closed thing a week down the road or whatever and a teacher has not had it done, they can then go to the, the closed one and then just cancel their other, is that the strategy?
That is absolutely my understanding, yes. I just would not want them to not sign up on Wednesday in hopes of a closed clinic because we are crossing our fingers and toes and we will research and outreach any plug we get. But if we can't make it happen, then I wouldn't want that to hold staff up.
So the key is, is unless you get a revelation in the next day and a half, they should sign up, get as early as they can, but if you get one, they can then use the, the closed one and then cancel the other. So that's the strategy you should use.
Correct.
A hundred percent, yep.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you so much for all your hard work on this, Melissa. Thanks for coming tonight. Next up is the 2021, 2022 school calendar. We're going to review the parent survey results. And Dr. McLaughlin, I'll let you walk those, walk us through those.
So thank you. So, excuse me, we had, the survey was open for about a week and we had one thousand two hundred and fifty-five responses. So that's a really good representation of our community. The first question, do you support having no school on Columbus Day, October eleventh, 2021? Seven hundred and thirty-nine said yes and five hundred and sixteen said no. So a significant majority wish for no school on Columbus Day. Second question, do you support having no school the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, November twenty-four, 2021? One thousand twenty-two responded yes, they would like to have no school on Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and two hundred and thirty-three replied no. Question three, do you support having no school on Martin Luther King Junior Day, January seventeen, 2022? Eight hundred and fifty-three replied yes, they do support having no school on Martin Luther King Day, and four hundred and two replied no. The fourth question, do you support having no school on President's Day, February twenty-one, 2022? Noting that February vacation next year is scheduled to begin the following week, February twenty-eight through March four, 2022. Three hundred and ninety-three said yes, they support having no school on President's Day, and eight hundred and sixty-two said no, they do not support having no school on President's Day. Question five, with teacher workshops typically held prior to the first day of school, the first day of school next year would be September seven, 2021. Are you in support of continuing this scheduling structure? One thousand eighty-four people responded yes, they do support that, and one hundred seventy-one responded no. Number six relates to an item tonight. In the event of inclement weather, are you in favor of a traditional snow day with no school? A pivot to remote learning instead of a no-school day or an alternative like a Blizzard bag? Note that a traditional no-school day must be made up at the end of the school year, extending the school year by the number of days canceled. Of those who responded, five, four hundred and eighty-three responded they would like to continue with a traditional no-school day. Five hundred and fifty-eight responded that they would prefer to pivot to remote learning and two hundred and fourteen preferred the alternative. The seventh question, how many students do you have in the Merrimack School District? Five hundred and forty-six responding said they had one. Five hundred and forty-three responded that they had two. One hundred and thirty-seven responded that they had three and twenty-nine responded that they had four or more. What level, the next question, what levels of school are they in? Choose all that apply. So of those who responded, six hundred and seventy-five had elementary school children. Three hundred and forty-three had upper elementary school children. Three hundred and twenty-three had middle school children and four hundred and fifty-five had high school children. And then the final question was, do you have internet access in your home? Of those responding, twelve hundred and forty-nine said yes and six replied no. So that is a survey of the calendar results and so I'll leave it at that.
Do you want me to bring up though? We did get an email that came in today, just before we begin the discussions amongst us, is that Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish holiday, is on September seven and September eight this year. And so that's just important to note as we look at how we want to finalize the calendar.
So can I just comment about process and see if, if this is what the board would agree to? So the idea tonight was that the board would have a chance to review the survey results and then comment however it wants to and provide guidance. The thought would be that that guidance coupled with information like was just shared would, and would feed into my presentation to the board at the next meeting of a draft calendar. And then I'd present that for the board's review at the next meeting. And one of two things would happen. Either the board would approve it that night or wish to, you know, take it up later. But in, in any event, is that the right process?
I'm fine with that. So I guess if there's any high-level comments, fine. If not, you know, if you have any questions regarding the survey, otherwise this gives the public time too to respond to us in our emails and to contact us and public comment and whatnot. So any comments? Andy and then Shannon.
Well, my only comment is based on the very last one. You said the email we got about Rosh Hashanah showing up at the very beginning of the year. Is that uncommon, common? I'm not familiar. We, we, is a district that those holidays typically aren't things that, that get, get called out. So I'm just curious whether this is something that's ever occurred in the past, how we would address that sort of question that came in.
I mean, since I've been on the board, I don't remember it happening early, as early as this, but later in September, Shannon?
Well, I think the context of the email that's missed is the fact that this is the first day of school and such an impactful, emotional day for students. So I think it's a first day where we've actually had that conflict present itself, but it is the day where you really kind of present yourself to your teachers, your classmates and that, those students who are of the Jewish facial will be missing out on that, that special milestone. But it's the first time, I think, in my time on the board that the, the two have converged.
Mine as well.
I'm certainly thankful for that community member bringing that to our attention.
So I actually have one comment on the survey and I think I dropped you a note on it, Mark, and that is- And that is question number six, which was the inclement weather. And I know we're going to lead into it, so I just wanted to kind of lay the groundwork there. So we had 214 say that they would be open to an alternative, which is a blizzard bag. But the one thing that the survey doesn't point out is that if you did a blizzard bag and less than 80% of the students completed the work in that blizzard bag, you would still need to make up the day. And I think that that information, having, had it been presented in the question, I know your questions, you can't like, you know, frame every question with all the ins and outs of it. But I'm wondering how many of those 214 would take the risk of having their kids do blizzard bags and if 80% aren't met, not making the day count?
That's a really good point and you're right, it might have impacted people's choice on that, on that one, you're right.
So as we're reviewing, I just kind of wanted out there that if you had 70% response rate on that blizzard bag, you'd still be making up the day at the end of the year. So.
Andy?
Which will raise the question when we get into the swap discussion later as to if you do pivot to remote. If we're back in person next year, but you have to pivot to remote, is there any threshold that we have to meet for student participation in order for that to count as well? I'm just, we don't have to answer it now, but that's just a thought that just came to my mind.
So I, but I can answer it and the answer is no because it would be like a day of school. Whereas a blizzard bag day would be no school. And then you'd have to have this, as Chair, as Vice Chair Barnes mentioned, you know, that threshold. Now, I don't know what the state might do between now and then. Remote, again, is going to be an option I think a lot of people are going to continue to elect. And so they may, they may introduce a threshold that they currently haven't. So that's a little bit of an unknown. But at the moment, it's a, the advantage at the moment would be that it's a school day. And so then you have students absent as you would normally on a school day. But if it's a called day and then we have blizzard bags, there has to be that, as Vice Chair Barnes mentioned, that 80% threshold.
Okay.
So all bets are off in terms of what the future direction will be.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Lori?
I was going to say, so I have some experience with blizzard bags and I think that they would only, you know, for it to really work, it could only be one or two days. You couldn't try to do blizzard for five days. And then you really need, it needs to be given to the students early. So it's not always going to completely link with the curriculum at hand because they have to, you know, physically have it in their hands. And, you know, I think, I know for the high schoolers, because they wanted to hit that 80% mark, most of the kids did do it, but I don't really know how elementary and middle school did it. But it is very, it is difficult. But a one or two shot deal, it kind of works, but after that, no.
You're completely correct on that, yep.
Shannon?
Well, I don't want to get too far into this discussion because I know it's coming up again in a couple of agenda points. But I just want to say, like, I don't want to get too hung up on this blizzard bag idea because if we're, if we're really going off, I think what most of us think is probably better options and what the community voted, blizzard bags was not the overwhelming choice for anyone anyway. So I don't know that we need to get too hung up on the blizzard bag thing anyway.
It was really for those who voted for, if they really knew what they were voting for. Because without framing that out, you know, it sounds like an idyllic situation, so.
True.
I did think it was interesting though that the majority, you know, preferred the pivot to remote learning compared to a traditional no school day. Not by an overwhelming number, but still it was a majority and that was kind of interesting to me. Okay, we will move on to the next item and that is the proposed last day of school. Dr. McLaughlin?
So this is a big one?
This is a big one. So let me get to it and I'll tell you the date and then I'll talk about caveats. So the date that we're proposing for the last day of school would be Friday, June 11. Friday, June 11. Now, we get to that, recall that the board, we asked the board and the board agreed that we would go to instructional hours this year as opposed to calendar days. That gave us a lot more flexibility, given the environment that we've been in. So thank you and that's been very helpful. So we have John particularly and the team really worked closely together. We have a, you know, there's a way to calculate and we have been provided with that. And so we, we calculate what things, the times that you can count in a school day and the times that you can't. And then it was in some respects different this year for a lot of obvious reasons. So for instance, we couldn't count days that we, like for instance, in late November, early December, as we were, you know, pivoting back to remote for the holidays, there were a couple of planning days, so we can't count those. So when all of that is factored in, the other thing that we need to do is find the first day that all the schools meet their instructional hours. So elementary schools need 945 instructional hours and middle and high school need 990. What we don't want to do is dismiss or end the school year on staggered times for, we've never done that. And so what we need, so what often happens, what, well, that would mean is that elementary, for the most part, would, you know, exceed its hours so that we, they can be aligned with the high school. So the first date that all of that works, that we get to 945 and 990 at a minimum, would be June 11th. And actually, we've exceeded those hours. So now the caveat is of course this. You know, I've, I've said throughout the year, it's impossible to predict right now anything. So apart from the weather, which is always, you know, it's 20 degrees today, so I'm not counting that out. And even if we, you know, have been using our remote pivot, we might have a day. We've had a lot of wind and we might have a day where we couldn't even do that. I'm not saying it's likely, but it could. We always talk about that year, years ago of the Mother's Day flood. So we thought, you know, we were in May, what could, what could happen? And then of course, we've got the current situation that continues to sort of be a little bit tenuous. Things are hopefully getting better, but we just don't know. So the message to the community is June 11th is the proposed last day of school. But if you're making plans, bear in mind that it may well be that we would have to go a few hours, meaning days beyond that. I'm not planning it now, obviously I've told you June 11th. But I know that people are counting on this to know how to plan. But always, we have announced last day of school and then we have, you know, snow days built in. And so, so I would just say to bear that in mind. I am desperately hoping that nothing interrupts that so that we can have June 11th be the day of our last day of school. But just in the interest of letting people know what the possibilities are, I just want to put that out there, not to be, you know, difficult or ambiguous, but just to state the obvious, which is that things change all the time in ways that we can't predict. So June 11th is a date we all hope for.
Certainly. You can't control what you can't control and you can't control the requirements of the state. So we have to work with all of that. Any comments, questions? Okay. Next item is the proposed, proposal concerning remote instruction and inclement weather. And that is with Dr. McLaughlin, John Fabrizio, Nicole, Bonnie and Rich.
Well, the team is gathering. I'm just going to thank them. They've been working on this for some time and I think they've really, you know, given a lot of thought to this and each of them in their own way have a really unique perspective, both from their former roles as employee, but as teachers and educators and administrators and also representing a span of grades. So I think that they're going to share some interesting thoughts with you and I'm grateful for their work. So I'll turn it to John.
Thank you very much and thank you for this opportunity. I want to mention our full team that worked on this because I think it's important. I have some representatives with me that I'll introduce, but I want to also thank Heather Barker, Nancy Rose, Bill Morris and Nancy Romero and Scott Rydel and Sarah Crowe. We're all members of our committee that we put together that worked on this. And along with that, we have Dr. Nikki Rowe, Richard Zampieri and Bonnie Pencho, who are all here to also represent our team tonight and talk about our new plan to move forward with on days that we have inclement weather and it's severe weather alternative plan or as Dr. Rowe coined, swap. And that was, so I think we did a nice job with this to kind of identify it and give it a name. And you'll see the components of swap really are that, you know, a swap day would be internet and power may be available. Scheduled with Zoom links are posted when possible. Lessons will be posted online to be completed independently and asynchronously by students. Students will have a grace period to complete the online assignments. For example, that grace period would come if their power was out, if it just happened to be they were having trouble getting online. Sometimes there's multiple families needing a device, things like that. We would give grace when that would happen. Special education support and services will be provided when possible. Flex Fridays will be available or other times to be available to help students connect with teachers and ask questions and to clarify assignments to do that. On a day that really the weather was awful and you can see by the pictures on our, on our, on our thing here, a day that really is nasty. Power, power is intermittent, schoolwork will not be assigned and snow days will be made up at the end of the year. That's our traditional snow day. So it allows for two options. So I want to talk a little bit about process. How did we come up with this and how did we land here? And I think it started really with, first of all, our team. And I mentioned our team, we gave a lot of feedback and a lot of thought to this. A lot of people on this team came from other districts and other places as, as, you know, Board Member Rothaus mentioned, had experience with doing some of this in the past. And we took that feedback and then we brought kind of a first proposal that had, you know, kind of three different days, a blue, white and a, and a blue, white and a, and a black day, we'll just say, for three days. And like the blue day was like the day we talked about now, it's our swap day. And then we had kind of a day that would be blizzard bags at the end of the day. And that was really confusing and we're like, well, that's too confusing. So we went back and then we got some more teacher input. And we surveyed our teachers in our buildings and came back and just said, so what do you think that would work? And that's really where we landed on our swap day. Then we also went to our CIT committee that we formed, our Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee, that Board Member Hardy sits on. And we also did that and kind of brought it forward and said, what do you think? And we took a lot of feedback there. So after all that feedback, we kind of came to this point and we said, we think this serves us well. We had an opportunity to really put some of this in place this year and allow our, allow us to, you know, kind of test the waters along the way and make some adjustments as we went. So now I'm going to turn to each of our administrators who've joined us and kind of let them talk a little bit about how it's been, how, some of the, some of the things that have gone really well for them. Some of the things that maybe we need a little improvement on and some maybe future improvements for next year. So Mr. Zampieri, would you mind stepping forward and going first, please?
Good evening. Thank you, John. Our experiences in the district and especially at the high school have put us in a good place to successfully implement these conditions for an alternative plan. Our experience for about five, six weeks of working remotely, all students had an experience of zooming with their, you know, classmates as well as zooming with their teachers. And so when we've had to use this plan unofficially, it's been able to work successfully. In every case, there are going to be cases, as we would certainly ask people, where a teacher might not have access and was hopefully able, using their phone to post some expectations because already on their Canvas pages, they had material for students to access. Likewise, when a student isn't able to access Zoom for whatever conditions, perhaps on a bad weather day, they had to be at the neighbors. They were allowed, that's the part about grace, where they were allowed to make up the work. I asked one teacher today, how did you handle the grace part of any students that didn't show up? She says, I give grace to all my students all the time. So I really didn't have to think about it in that sense. And so that was sort of like embracing sort of what we're going through, I mean, in that sense. So the technology is already in place to successfully implement. The work that was done in our departments with the ELCs and the Canvas pages has put us in a good position to implement. As I think about next year, I would only ask that, you know, the weather is a forecast. We don't always know the day before, though if it's possible, I think staff would like to know so they can bring home all the materials and the technology. Parents would like to know what may be there, what's going to happen the next day if they can. But as we know, we've had one of those days, I think, and we've had one of the alternatives where we wait to see what it's really going to be like. Because I think ideally we want students in front of us. But if it gets called that morning, we're able to implement in that sense. The only other, I think students appreciate no snow days in the sense of some would like to have a snow day off. But I also know that for other students, keeping it going, no break in the curriculum is a positive for many students as well. Questions now or later?
We'll do, we'll do.
Okay.
Thank you. And then Dr. Rowe, would you mind?
Good evening. So Rich said some things that you'll hear from all of us and I'm here representing the upper elementary. Having the capacity to Zoom and truly understand Zoom is something that will serve us very well as well as our Canvas pages. That's not only great for our students, but it's great for parents because now they know how to navigate one page. If they're one of those parents that have four students in the district, they can understand one platform. It's also pretty seamless for teachers to post and receive work. Teachers have the technology that they need now to conduct learning in a virtual classroom. We've had, you know, a whole year to really refine that. And so even when we're back in class next year full time, teachers will have all of that experience and professional development to implement that. Some important things to think about with instruction. As Rich said, there are no break in, no breaks in the routine of learning. You can continue from, with that lesson from the day before, which is so important for our elementary school students. It's wonderful for our special education students who are, who really benefit from that consistent feedback that they're getting every day and be able to use that feedback to inform instruction for the next day. And another thing, when I was talking to a teacher about this that I found very interesting was the teacher said that she could conduct small groups without having to manage the classroom in the way that she does in the classroom. So if you have 24 students in the classroom and you have a small group, you're managing your small group or you're, you're working with your small group and managing your other students. But this allows a teacher to give an assignment and then to start really differentiating for students, pulling students in, saying, okay, these two students, I'm going to work with you right now in five minutes. I want this group to come back on. And so it's an extra opportunity to work in small groups. It's important to mention that at the upper elementary school, we have two floors. And if you've ever been to our school in the middle of June, it is crazy, crazy hot. So having that end date more towards the beginning of June is a huge benefit for our students and teachers, not working within, you know, working till like the end of June where we're going to have many more hot days. Let's see. Oh, this one I think is really important. One of the things that we hear about is, oh, the snow day is nostalgia, let the kids have fun. Well, at the elementary school level, we have recess. And so our teachers can say in the day, go ahead, go outside, play in the snow. They can do that. It's a natural break. It's something that we do anyway. It's incorporated into our day. And so we can still give kids that wonderful experience of having that joyous moment to play. Some things that we need to think about as we look towards the future. This really is a community effort and so attendance is going to be very important. It's hard to move ahead and teach the next lesson if you only have half of your class or three quarters of your class. And so we would hope that the community would partner with us to ensure that attendance was consistent. We also know how important grace is and we're very. We also know how important grace is and we're very comfortable, like Rich said, with giving our students grace. We, we know that some of our children do still go to daycare when they're not in school. Uh, and so teachers would have a system to be able to catch kids up, uh, in a way that is respectful of, you know, time management. Teachers expressed that it is really wonderful to know the day ahead. So while they're still at school, um, teachers, obviously we've seen this this year, want to do the very, very best job that they can. So they're going to want to bring home their books, their lesson plans, their, um, document cameras, all of the things that they would need to have a really robust school day. So that was one thing that was very important to the teachers as we move forward, um, to be able to have that time to, um, be plantful. Thank you.
And Assistant Principal Bonnie Ponschall from Reed's Ferry Elementary School.
Hello. Thank you very much. You'll probably hear that I'm going to echo many things that both Rich and Nikki said. We've learned so many lessons this year and, um, that's one of the reasons why transitioning to the swap day is, is relatively seamless. Our, uh, when our schools needed to go remote, we had the capability, knowledge and experience in order to do so because we've been doing it, uh, through Thanksgiving. So our teachers have the experience, our students have their, the experience, our families have had the experience. One benefit of swap is, as they have mentioned, is that opportunity to continue momentum. I'm an administrator now, but I'm not that far out of the classroom. I come from a district that had blizzard bags. When you, when you, uh, put together a blizzard bag in August, you hope that when you have your first snow day, it has something to do with what you're doing in the classroom. With the swap day, the work that the students are working on at home is connected to what they did the day before, what they would have been doing in class if it hadn't snowed or the, or had a blizzard. So it's purposeful work and it keeps the momentum that, that hard, uh, that hard part as an educator, the stop and the start of winter storms is really difficult to keep the, the learning momentum going. So this is one way to help support that. I would say the migration to Canvas has been instrumental in making this work. We have a consistent platform, platform for all the teachers and families in the district and, um, and the students and the families know how to use it, which is wonderful. Also at the elementary level, Canvas, um, has given us a tool to be able to put our schedules up, the assignments up, as well as Zoom links. So during that swap day, um, teachers can meet with whole group, small group instruction or one-on-one to support students who need additional help with the work that was assigned that day. In addition, teachers will put up in, um, resources, video resources, practice work, interactive, um, apps for students to work on. But within our district, teachers also have a plethora of, um, video platforms. For instance, they can do literacy footprints, invisions, um, words their way, mystery science. Those are all, um, opportunities for teachers to post on the Canvas site for students to work and connect to what they were doing that week. And lastly, through the assignments, um, students and families, um, will be able to have the convenience to do it at their time. The teachers are there to support, to get together, to do small group work, but also as we've said multiple times, giving grace for those students who need a little extra time, might need to do it at night, maybe even over the weekend. And, um, teachers obvious will give grace for when that work is collected.
Thank you. I would just add, um, two more, just a brief summary of comments too that have really helped us get to this point. One, um, I think Rich mentioned, um, essential learning competencies and I think, uh, our ELCs. That's helped us really align, um, our curriculums across the district. So what's happening, um, you know, in, in one English nine class is kind of happening in the other English nine class. And that's been a positive change of something that's happened that, um, one of the changes that being, um, in this system of a pandemic has led us to have to make some things be more aligned with each other because we have to be on the same page when we're in different places. And that's been very helpful. That's the first thing. Um, and to highlight again Nancy Rose and the work that her team along with Island New Hampshire has done to move us towards one platform, K to 12 with Canvas is just amazing. That takes districts sometimes three to four years and, and th- this team has been able to do it in four months. And, and that's just again, I just want to highlight those two endeavors that have helped us, um, really align things. So, uh, thank you. And can I, um, answer any questions for any of our members of the team?
Uh, Board Member Rothaus and then Board Member Schneider.
So I was just thinking, um, would it be possible, cause we haven't built the calendar yet, to have, you know, in no, early November or late October, a remote day for the whole district where you can get the kinks out. Cause you know, the snow day comes and then it's like the, the crazy, right? But if we had a day, we called it remote learning day, everybody knows it's the blinker before the turn and we had that remote day, like maybe Veterans Day, you know, now it'll, it'll probably snow in October while we say this, but you know, and, and we do that day and everyone has a practice, run and then we're ready to go. That's just a thought.
It's an excellent idea. Sorry. It's an excellent idea. We certainly, uh, we certainly can do that. I actually like the term blinker before the turn. So, I mean, I can build that in to the calendar that I per- provide to the board for its review. And I think it's as long as anything could be done with a little notice. So if it's built into the calendar, sure. So that will be included in the, what we provide to you.
So I just to clarify, you're saying before Veterans Day, right?
Yeah. I'm saying, you know, if, like if we did it before Veterans Day or so everyone knows this is going to be our remote practice day and then we do a, you know, district wide, then everyone, yeah, cause that's when you really find out, right? And then when we really do it, we'll be ready to go.
I think what you mean by that date is just do it before we have to do it because it's snow. So if we did it in December, we're running the risk of having it not be a blinker before the turn, but the thing.
Exactly. And that's why I said, cause it has snowed on like Halloween.
Yeah.
I was just thinking Halloween. It's like that might, you know, be a win-win for everybody. Jenna? Andy and then Jenna, sorry.
Go ahead, Andy.
So I guess one of the questions I've got, and it actually comes into play this year too, because of the way we're doing the, the days. What sort of measuring stick or guidelines are you going to use to determine whether power or the environment is appropriate for a snow day versus that? I mean, do you look at, have you thought about looking at power outages across public service or what sort of criteria are you considering?
So, uh, I, I think that, that what we're proposing makes, makes that call just a little bit trickier because if you have a snow day, you, it's just a snow day and it can either be bad driving or it could be power, but it's just a snow day here. We're trying to, the distinction would be it's not safe enough to come into school, but it's not so bad, meaning power outages that we have to call it off altogether. So, you know, like everything else, you pay, you know, those are sleepless nights. You pay a lot of attention to the news. You stay up all night, look at the trees to see if they're blowing and, you know, turn on your lights to see if they work. I mean, that kind of thing, uh, confer a lot with Matt who works closely with transportation and the DPW to try to understand, uh, the impact on road crews and what they suggest and so on. So the criteria would be if we can have, uh, school, we'll have it. If we can't have live school, but we can run a day, uh, we'll have it. And if we feel like it's like the blizzard of seventy-eight where it really is pretty much, nobody can do anything, we're losing power, then we'll just call, call it the day and that's what has to be made up. So it's not really a science. It's, um, you know, and, 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 you know, we very much would like to be able to give, um, people notice. But as you know, I mean, you know, there have been a couple of times where we've jumped the gun a little bit. We've said no school tomorrow and then it's gone out to sea. And then people are like, well, it's sunny. Why did you do that? Well, it wasn't that way at six o'clock, uh, in the morning. So at some point you gotta just kind of call it. So, you know, those would be the factors that would contribute to a distinction between one or the other. And I think like everything else, we'll get it right sometimes and not right other times.
I, I just think it's, I mean, it's, you described the, the model it is today, whether you have school or no school. I mean, where you consult with all those ones. I'm just thinking because you're adding sort of this third option of, you know, a swap day, an in-school day, a swap day or, or a traditional snow day. It would be good to share with the board and the parents, once you, once, if we decide this is the approach, what additional criteria you'll look at because power comes into play. That's the main difference between a snow day versus a swap day. If you've got, you know, most of the town with power, then you need to make a decision. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that it'd be good to share sort of the way that criteria is to help make that decision between a true snow day and a swap day.
Yep. Yep. Definitely we can do that. Also just to factor in a little bit more of a complication, we have a lot of teachers who travel here from other communities and Massachusetts even. And you know, that a few miles can make some, make a big difference. So you might have a situation where a we can call a swap day because the conditions aren't so windy or bad here that we have power, but that you might have a teacher coming in from the seacoast, uh, who wouldn't have power and so therefore couldn't conduct his or her class. And that would be very hard to assess where are the communities from which our people are coming and what's their weather. So that's why I think you've heard different members of the team talk about grace, which would have to be extended both ways. Uh, if you happen to, if we have a snow day, uh, if we have a swap day and that's because most of Merrimack has power, but a tree came down on Bean Road and everybody who lives on Bean Road doesn't, then we're not going to say, well, you know, too bad for you. We'll give grace and make up work. And likewise, I would hope that people would understand that if Mrs. Jones who's come in from the seacoast can't, doesn't have power, she can't conduct school and that means that, you know, she'll do it as soon as she can. So we'll do our best to develop criteria, but, um, you know, so little is, uh, cut and dry. So there would have to always be that understanding of exceptions. But yeah, your point is well taken and we can certainly try to do that.
Any other questions?
Um, I have one and it's around the concept of Flex Friday. Is that what I read? So, cause right now we have Flex Friday, but you know, next year, um, you know, it's, you know, is, is the thought that there would be a Flex Friday next year or is?
No, but just opportunities for teachers like always to reconnect with your, with your student, talk to your student, times to email your stu- email, email the teacher, um, you know, contact them, set up a spec- a separate time to meet, you know? The elementary level, a lot of times they, they'll meet before like the eight to, you know, eight, 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 eight-thirty timeline, they'll meet with them then. There's all multiple opportunities throughout the day for them to meet and help catch up kids who are absent or whatever. It would follow the same criteria in that aspect.
But I think your point is that the title Flex Friday connotes one thing now and we're talking about using it differently, but it's the same, it's the same term. So I, I understand that. We might, we.
We'll adjust that.
Yeah. I would adjust that.
Yep. Yep. I understand that.
I think parents are probably expecting, as the school board is, that when we.
Oh, for sure. For sure. Yes. Yep. No, we can adjust that term.
That gave me a heart attack there.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, that's it. Any other, uh, well, I'm all set. So I think we'll move on to the next one. So thanks, everyone, for all of your hard work on this and thanks for coming out tonight.
So just a point of order was, is the board going to take action to recommend whether we pick this up? Is this a, what's the, I'm just curious, we had it presented tonight. What's the next step with this concept?
So, um, I would, would ask this. I think it would be helpful for the board to think about this presentation and then, um, to sort of take the formal position on whether you would endorse the swap day as our plan moving forward, um, for next school year. Now, in the event that we have bad weather between now and the next meeting, um, we'll probably do what we've done to this point, which is, you know, we have just sort of called some remote days and, you know, that hasn't been because it's been part of a systematic plan. It's just how we've tried to handle the situations that have arisen. So that's probably what we do in the next two weeks if we had to. But pro- it, it would be very helpful to have the board, next meeting, kind of say what it wants or how it wants to modify what we presented so then that could become the way that we handle it in the future. And then we can begin to introduce the term swap severe weather alternative plan into the vocabulary of how we talk about inclement weather. So yeah, I would ask, we could put it on the agenda if you'd allow me to.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's put it on the agenda. It certainly allows the community to weigh in, um, as well. So.
Yep.
Thank you. Oh, John.
And I'll update, um, I'll update the draft and I'll forward it to you, Cindy. And if you want to forward others, I'll update this with that.
That's right. Thank you.
Correction. Um, Cindy, I'm sorry. Can, can I just, this is kind of unusual, but I just got an update relative to number five on the agenda.
Sure.
So could I just?
Yeah.
Go back to that. So this is an example of how quickly things turn. So I just, I just, uh, got a message from Patty Crooker, who's the Public Health Network Services Coordinator for Greater Nashua Public Health. And it came in.
So did I, Mark, and I was so hoping you'd let me just kind of let go with it, but that's okay.
Yeah. No, I'm gonna, I.
See, I, I think, I think what probably happened is Laurie mentioning Paul McCally kind of caused the small tremor in Nashua.
Well, you never know.
So then this happened.
You never know. So, but it's, so, so it just came in at seven oh nine. So anyway, uh, thank you for all your patience as we finalize the legal and business end of planning for our regional K-12 school staff COVID-19 vaccination clinic. I know that a lot of people are anxiously waiting to be able to schedule an appointment for vaccination. The clinic will be held from nine AM to five PM on Saturday, March twenty-seven and Sunday, March twenty-eight. The clinic will be held in Merrimack. Everyone who has been registered by their school or SAU will be able to choose an appointment daytime to be vaccinated at the clinic. As of this morning, we had around thirty-five hundred school staff signed up for the regional clinic. We, I mean, not signed up, but you know, uh, available, available for the regional clinic. We are very excited to be entering the last stage of planning and look forward to being able to see you all there. Within the next day or two, we will be pushing out a registration link as well as details, including directions and what to bring and other frequently asked questions. Since schools, SEUs have already provided the names and other information we need for their staff, aside from a few exceptions, everyone will just need to follow a link and choose a day and time for their appointment. We still do not know which COVID-19 vaccine we will be allocated. Per New Hampshire DHHS, we do not anticipate receiving any substantial shipments of Johnson and Johnson vaccine. Therefore, the vaccine will be either Pfizer or Moderna. It is important for you to know that the fixed sites receive vaccine from the same allocation we do, meaning they will not have Johnson and Johnson vaccine either. If you only want to be vaccinated with Johnson and Johnson vaccine, it may be more than three to four weeks until doses of the vaccine are available in our area. Of course, this too may change. Thanks for all that you do. I will be in touch shortly with the links for scheduling individual appointments. So literally that's just, so see, when you talk about planning, like you just, you gotta hold on tight. So, um, the, the message, I just want to go back to what Melissa Gagny said. I think our advice still should be register on March seventeenth. So wherever the camera is, please register on March seventeenth. And if your date, um, after you register on March seventeenth is after the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth, then register for the, register when you get the link for the regional site and take whichever date is earlier and then the other will be canceled. They're getting better at this. So I just, you know, don't want anybody to think that they shouldn't continue to get going on the seventeenth. So, but that's good news and I'm sure there'll be more that we'll be pushing out. Since Melissa left, she just got home and she, she said, can you believe, you know, I was just there and I could have said it. So, uh, anyway, so, so we'll be saying more. So thank you for that.
That's, that's outstanding news.
Yep.
That's something we've all been waiting for. Andy.
Yeah. You may want to make sure this notice goes directly to all staff tomorrow through the school, cause I don't know how many people are watching this, so.
Right. Exactly. Oh, I'm sure Melissa, trust me, she's.
And be very clear on, on what approach to take too. Because if you know that everybody's going to be opened up for the twenty-seventh and everybody can sign up, maybe the state doesn't want you to clog up the broader one with people registering. So probably get some good clarification before you do your advice.
I have no doubt Melissa's going to be on the phone with Patty first thing in the morning.
Cool.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's outstanding. All right. Moving on to the board review of the district travel policy, uh, Board Member Jenna Hardy.
Okay. So we had previously adjusted the stu- the district travel policy to align the definition of the essential travel with New Hampshire DHHS, um, and their travel guidance for New Hampshire. And New Hampshire has. And New Hampshire has now significantly altered their travel guidance, um changing it from being required to recommended and all these things. So um I was thinking it was time that we take another look at this policy and how we can make sure it makes sense moving forward and maybe so that we don't revisit, revisited every other meetings because they keep changing it and how we can better align it and also make it maybe, um you know, less restrictive as we're moving forward into sort of a new phase with people and vaccinations and numbers dropping and that sort of thing. So I was hoping to start a discussion with the board on where we think, or maybe start with Dr. McLaughlin. I don't know where we wanna start on this. Just kinda open the discussion for how we should adjust this so that we don't have to keep adjusting it maybe.
Andy.
Unless you wanna go first. Oh, I, I, I didn't say it. So the, the, the DHHS state document that we referred to when we made the last change that defined essential travel continues to be updated. Although it's interesting, it has been updated since early January, although it seems pretty relevant from reading it now, is it has introduced things about post-vaccine quarantine and stuff. It's shortened the quarantine period. It's, it is a place that appears to be a much more living document than our policy is. So my initial suggestion is, is in the cases where today we have a deferral to this document within the policy when it comes to essential travel definition. It's possible within the employees and the students section, when we talk about length of quarantine, we could again defer to this document, which keeps, keeps evolving. It talks about vaccines, it talks about reduced times. That way, we've got a policy in place, but it, it in itself lives because it refers to a living document. So that's an initial suggestion that I have.
Yeah, and I would say the reason I asked for this to be on the agenda at all is because I share those thoughts exactly. I think we're just gonna have to keep revisiting it because I feel like, I literally just, exactly what you said, so, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I support that as well. Is there, as far as, and certainly you have your comments, but I was gonna say, you know, if someone wanted to revise it and maybe put it on consent or something for next meeting or-
Could I, could I just make one before that? So um, so what I would ask the board to consider is this. To the point that um Jenna and Andy have just made. One option that the board, one option that the board could take is to rescind this policy and direct the administration to just follow the guidelines presented by the state. The, 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 the challenge that's been presented by this change is that uh it doesn't say, for instance, to any district that you can't continue your policies. What it does is it says, we don't recommend certain things anymore. And we do recommend other things, but it doesn't issue like a, a decree. So Merrimack, to this point, has been fairly conservative in its approach to a lot of things around this. And, and um so, and you know, that's taken us to wherever we're at. But I guess my point is, is that if we're going to, right now, this is not recommendations. The policy is like what we do. So if we wanna stay aligned with the state, then we just call it a recommend- there would be no reason to maintain a policy that recommends you do things. Uh it would be kind of like saying to a kid, you know, I recommend you brush your teeth. And when this kid doesn't brush his teeth, you can't then say, I can't believe you didn't brush your teeth. So, so I think that if we're, if we're going to agree that we wanna just real, uh really, uh yeah, release a little bit here, then I might suggest that we just, just rescind the policy. This has always been a temporary emergency policy and then just direct administration to, to follow the directives that we get from, you know, from the state. I will just say um that part of the reason that we have been behaving the way we've been behaving is because, in terms of, you know, a little bit more strict, is because we continually see evidence, as much as we all want things to just be better, we continue to see evidence of things not being so great. I'll give you an example. Today, someone um on the fifteenth day after an exposure, uh developed symptoms. Now, we have fourteen days, right? But the body and the virus do what they do. So, you know, there are reasons why we're continuing to try to have a certain strictness um so that we can keep the wheels on the bus. This has always been the case. We want schools to stay open, we want them to be consistent and the stops and starts of a classroom, the quarantining or a grade level or a school. You know, I'd very much like to not have to do that. And the price you pay for that is being a little strict on the other end. So I'm not, I'm, I'm really, we will do whatever the board wants and we will make it work. I'm just trying to articulate that the reason that we have been kind of strict in our interpretation of things is so that, you know, we can limit the variability of this very difficult to pin down thing. So, but if the board just says, let's just, you know, tell administration, follow the directive of the state, we can do that, and then I would just recommend get rid of the policy.
Andy.
So while I agree that's an approach we could take, that we should talk about, I think it is, we need to do more than just leave it up to administration to do it because then it's not that I don't trust administration, it's that the parents don't have guidance on what to worry about. So we've gotta have some policy or some statement, I don't know what we call it, that's, that points parents to general guidelines or, or, or best practices, if you will, that administration will also look at so that everybody knows the playing rules, right? I mean, that's, I think we've gotta at least do that. And I don't know if by rescinding the policy completely and coming out with a guideline, I don't know the right way to do it. I'm struggling a little bit, so.
Well, I agree with you because um it's, really becomes a communication vehicle at that point 'cause families know that we have this policy here. And, you know, for it to actually, they keep going back to reference it, then, I mean, it's only temporary anyway, so, I mean, I don't think, I think we might wanna just rip it all up pretty soon, you know, eventually, um once we get through this nightmare. But um I do think that it, to maintain consistency with our families, it's probably an important thing to keep, but just update with the guidance that we would have. Is it Laurie, did I see your hand or is it Jenna?
So, yeah, so I was gonna say, you know, thank you to Jenna. I know a, a number of parents have reached out. But the duration of the policy, we said from the very beginning that this is a temporary policy and it was gonna be, um you know, in place, but uh, you know, it was gonna be fluid. So I think we can either do it with Dr. McLaughlin says, you know, say, we're gonna, going to follow and put it on our website, we're following the state of New Hampshire guidelines for travel, or we can keep updating it and, 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 and make it relevant. And, and so right now, I see the big places that we'd need to change is like the fourteen days to ten days. That would be the big change if, if that's the route we wanted to go.
Just, just to insert, I think we don't even put the fourteen days, we refer to the guidelines within the document because it could change again-
Yeah, cause it could be seven.
Right, I mean, if, if we're gonna make this a living document, let's make it a living document. Let's not-
I agree.
Put other stakes in the ground that could change in two weeks or something, so.
I mean, even if it's two, even if the policy is, we will follow-
Right.
The state, here's the website, boom.
Simple as that.
You know, then it's there and temporary. Yeah.
So.
Andy, summarize.
So essentially, what we would consider potentially is that, is the travel guidance for student and staff, is to just have a paragraph that says that, "For the purposes of best practices and knowledge, both administration and parent should follow the link to this and just leave it at that." I mean, something like that.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I was just gonna say, do I need to make a motion to that effect?
Could I just, before you do that, can I just, so, so I'm, I'm getting really literal here. So this, this is the, this is the policy right here. So what you're saying is that the, well, I wanna, so the text of the policy as is would change and instead would say, "For the purposes of best practice," et cetera, we'll find the language, and then provide a link to the state site. And so that the policy will remain in effect as a policy, but the literal language that's here would change. So we keep it as a temporary policy, but just say, "The way this policy is gonna be implemented in the Merrimack School District can be found at WWW dot whatever." And then that, is that-
Mm-hmm, and then that's a living, breathing, changing with current guidelines.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Um I was just gonna say, there's language about what employee expectations are. So we're talking so much about families, but employee expectations, I think we wanna keep consistent. I would assume, as far as what communications on their plan to travel, um if, you know, the daily screening processes, we don't wanna strip that out necessarily 'cause, you know, although fam- we're, we're, we are talking about families and student expectations, but I don't think we wanna um throw away any consistency that we've had that have kept us so successful operating the district by throwing out employee expectations.
Andy.
Well, and to, to that point, the document that we're reporting to is um employer travel school, travel screening and exclusion guidelines. This is designed for employees to do that. And it's, and sort of we're cascading it to students, treating them as employees. And in the document, it does talk about screening and things like that, that, that we've sort of replicated down here. The employee participates in travel, require them to quarantine or return. That's in this document itself as well.
But daily expectations are as well?
No.
No.
So I guess the question that I have is, is are there things that administration would like to ensure continue to happen that may not match or, or are more stringent than what's in the document? So we need to understand that, I guess, before we-
Right, and that, that's what I was gonna say, I don't think we're ready for a motion. I think what we want is a draft or something at our next meeting. And, you know, something that, you know, based on, cause I, I don't, any of us wanna vote on the gist of a policy, we wanna vote on the policy. So that would just be my recommendation is to put it on our next agenda item as, as a modified to meet district expectations and current, and uh current expectations from CDC and DHHS.
So I guess the, the action is for administration to, to look through the policy, the, the document, the link. It is the link that's in the policy. And see if there's anything that you would like to add that's above and beyond what that has and reflect that in the policy and then just defer everything else to the policy. Maybe that's the ask.
Laurie? And could we make a motion though to change just the fourteen days to ten days? Cause that's what parents have been asking for and that is the New Hampshire travel guidelines. Can we make that motion to make that change?
As an interim, as an interim step?
As an interim step?
You're welcome to make.
Okay, so I make a motion that we cha- change the fourteen days to ten days as an interim step as administration uh rewrites the policy based on current information.
Do I have a second?
Uh, can I, can I ask for the motion to be amended? Because within the NH, well, see, this is where it gets complicated because like now I just wanna, I want, I was thinking it just makes sense to have it match this. And in order to match this, you can test out of quarantine on days six and seven.
Yes, you can.
So I would want it to match that.
Say that too.
Do you know what I'm saying? Like I would make a motion that we amend, if we're going to amend it before we're gonna redraft it, my, my motion would be for it to be a ten-day quarantine that you can test out of according to, in accordance with the current recommendations from New Hampshire DHHS.
That's it, yeah.
Will you amend that?
Sure.
Okay, then do I have a second? Jenna, any comments? Shannon?
Could you please, um, and I know we do this at even deliberative sessions, so if we're gonna, because this is a policy they have to put into place tomorrow morning. And again, we're still dealing with a gist. So if you can write out what the policy should read, and that way we're actually making a motion on language that they can actually implement in the morning? Cause it sounds like that's what you're asking for. Right now, I, again, I don't wanna vote on the gist of an, of a policy, I wanna vote on a policy. If that seems, if you know what I'm saying. Cause if he gets it wrong, then we vote on something and, you know, on the gist, you know, we all, we all know what the best intentions are.
Sure, so are you asking me to?
Well, the motioner would have to present the language.
There, and there's two places.
Yep, there are.
The employee and student.
Absolutely. So that's what I'm saying, if we could put it on next agenda, I think it would take care of a lot of problems and not, not create-
Can I?
Well, we, we have a motion on the floor.
Let's see. Personally, I don't mind voting on it tonight, as long as the language is clear, I think.
Right, but the point is we're not, we don't have a lot to vote on.
What I have is the New Hampshire DHHS policy right in front of me. I'll just say their language. Their language says residents of New Hampshire need to self-quarantine for ten days following the last date of any high-risk travel. Now, I'm gonna skip down a few more lines. It says, um, they have the option of ending their quarantine after, after day seven by getting a test on day six to seven of their quarantine. It has to be a molecular test. If the person is asymptomatic and the test is negative, then the person, I mean, it's really wordy. You know what I'm saying? Like I could try to say all that, but it's all in here. And, and my preference would be that our school district align with this policy. So Laurie made the motion, but I just read it off of there, so I don't know how we wanna do that.
So just for the purposes of just my clarification, so a lot of, a lot of this, um I think, since the governor's press conference, kind of pivots around an individual district's preferences around recommendations versus requirements. So a lot of the state now is, is uh the language that seems to be coming from the state is sort of like recommending, like we recommend this, but uh, or, or, let me say it differently. A lot of the language seems to be, you can relax your standards a little bit if you want. We, we recommend, however, that you have a slightly stricter guideline. Do you see, so, so the, the, so the question really for us to answer is the, the state's reduced guidelines, I think what I'm hearing is that's what we want to do. Or that's what the motion is, and that's fine. But that's a different thing than saying that's what the state recommends because in conversations that we've had, there are lots of times that we hear, "It's really better to do X, it's really better to do Y." Cause like, "We're not out of the woods" and so on. So that's what I mean, the word recommendations, it's tricky. So I just wanna, I just wanna underst- stand if we're, if we're gonna agree with what is in, as Board Member Hardy just read, that's fine. But remember that that's not necessarily the same thing as best practice. Right? So, and, and again, you know, I'm, 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 I'll do what you want. But there's a little bit of a, a, a difference. And what we've been trying to do is hold a pretty strict line, we have, so that we don't then get ourselves into a little thing later on. And there just seem to be enough questions in the operation of this that make me a little worried about that. But again, I don't think anybody has a crystal ball. So the point really is just recommendation versus requirement. And we could, we could decide to pick and choose, like, so, anyway.
Andy.
So we can make this either really complicated or not complicated. If we're pragmatic, we know that in two weeks, we're going to have something that we're gonna approve that's gonna refer to the DHHS page in two weeks. My recommendation, I know there's a motion on the board, on the floor. My recommendation is, for purposes of an interim step, the old keep it simple, stupid approach, let's just move it from ten, fourteen to ten days as an interim step. Because the testing out is, I'd rather refer to a document that's clear and we can point to because if we try to paraphrase pieces, we're gonna miss something. So my, my recommendation that I would like to-
Is the original recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, the original is to, I understand what your intent is, but we're talking about a two-week period and this is sort of a meet halfway in the middle kinda thing until we do it, that, anyway.
Are you open to amending your-
So, yeah, so we can amend and go back to the original recommendation that we changed the fourteen days to ten days with a, a review in two weeks of the document.
Jenna, will you second?
Yeah.
In both, in two places.
In two places.
And, and again, so that would be the third paragraph under employees.
Right.
And that would be the second paragraph under students.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
Any other comments? We'll call the question. Um all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries, five zero zero.
Thank you.
Next item, the future considerations for five to twelve learning. So, um, this is on the agenda, for, uh, first and foremost, I want to welcome our students back at the elementary levels to four and a half days, one year and two days after this whole nightmare began, so it's a cer- certainly an exciting day for these families. I've seen social media, I've seen teachers excited to finally be back with their kids in their class, all of them together, so certainly a very exciting day for our district. When we first began the discussions for bringing in a phased approach, our littles back, the younger grades, we talked about, nothing with any formality, of kind of the phased going back in. So now that we've got the youngest grades back in, I wanted to basically come together and talk about how we want to move forward with ga- grades five through twelve for a couple of reasons. You know, one is, do we continue with the phased approach, which I'm personally in favor of, and then the other is, it's giving people expectations of what they can expect as we kind of finalize the school year. So I just wanted to be able to have an open conversation and look at what the thoughts are as it relates to grades five through twelve and finishing the school year, particularly now that we've kind of got this first hurdle of the K through four back. So I just wanted to open it up for discussion, and I guess before I do, I don't know, Mark, if you had any comments?
So, um, so when we talked a little bit about this, what, um, you know, we've, we've, we are always open to modification. I think that when we presented the plan, um, back for second semester back in the winter, earlier winter, you know, one of the things that was raised was not wanting to lock in to a plan for the whole year when there could be considerable things for the better that happen, including vaccinations and so on. So, you know, we've recognized all along that that's true. I guess my, 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 I'd be curious to hear what the board would, would want us to consider now, and that maybe in the next couple of weeks, we could bring something back to you. Right now, you know, I, I will say again, we have generally taken a pretty conservative approach to, to this. I haven't been one who's wanted to jump onto the, we're all better now, because I've just seen too many examples of when, when that happens, we regret it. So I just want to make sure that from now through the rest of the school year, you know, we can maintain momentum, we can maintain our operations. The five through twelve, um, world, you know, with the cameras is just, you know, a few weeks underway, so there's a lot that's still being worked on and developed there, but we've got our, our families and our teachers really continuing to adapt to that. Pretty significant enhancement, um, and, and also, you know, the, the, we certainly can and have shown that we can be flexible, and there needs to be, you know, uh, some, some planning around that, so that we can execute it properly. So there's just a lot going on right now, and, and one of the things that we hear a lot from our community is, you know, tell us what we can expect, and they, they are building their families' lives around, this is the model, this is what we do. So, so that's what I'd say, but having said that, you know, we certainly will take thoughts and, and try to put that together into a draft of a flexibility plan, if that's what the board wants to see, and, you know, we can do that.
Shannon, and then Laurie.
Well, I would say that tonight had a lot of information in it, in the first being that, I was playing with the calendar a little bit, that the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth are, is our first vaccination clinic for our staff. And, you know, the, and keeping that in mind, if all goes as planned, and I assume, based on your, um, reading of the email, it'd be a two-shot cycle, I believe you'd be looking at, say, the eighteenth would be the, uh.
Unless it's Moderna.
Unless it's Moderna, and that's four weeks, which would put you at the week of spring break, actually. So the earliest I would see any, I, I would even entertain, if from my position, I would feel comfortable entertaining a full-time return to school, even if it made sense, would be May third. Because that would have our staff, of course, you know, they could theoretically still be carriers, but, um, less likely. Of course, that, you know, can contain the spread a little better, we know that the littles don't present, and, but the elders can, so that, that would be the earliest I'd be comfortable with, I mean, if we decide to entertain it at all. But you're right, you know, families have settled into this, and making one more change might be more disruptive, um, more harm than good, so interested to hear, you know, other thoughts, but that would be the first date I think we'd be even responsible to discuss.
Laurie.
Okay, so I'm, I'm opposite of that, and I would move that the board direct the superintendent to report back on a special meeting on March twenty-ninth, on his plan to reopen kindergarten through twelfth grade, full-time, in April. That's a motion.
So March twenty-ninth, I have a conflict, I can say that.
Okay, so, the thirtieth?
I, I could do the thirtieth. Anyone couldn't do a special meeting on the thirtieth? Well, she's doing the motion, so then it would be decided, but right out of the bat, the twenty-ninth, they can't do in the motion. What?
I need a se- I don't have a second.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I'll second that.
Seconded by Jenna. Um, discussion? Andy.
So I'm not sure about the getting everything together by the twenty-ninth, but whatever, the, the will of the board will do that. I believe that there needs to be a plan, if, if we're gonna, I, I wanted to see a plan, I don't know if the twenty-ninth is fa- is too fast, but whatever. A plan, I would, I'd like to see that plan divided, I'd like to see the plan for bringing five through eight back, full-time, and then what it means for the high school. Because I have heard through various sources that the real strive is to get K through eight back full-time, that high school presents sometimes challenges, so even though I'd like to see the plan for the whole thing, I'd like to see what it would mean for picking up five and six, and seven and eight, and then what it would mean for the high school, and then the board would have then some granularity in terms of what they were to choose. But I, I would like it to make sure that we don't lump it all together, that we look maybe those, those three levels, that'd be my preference.
So I just, I, I, I have, I feel compelled to say, we have to, you know, I, I, and I know, I don't know about other districts, whatever, but I will just say that this district, we have worked really hard with our teachers to try to create the conditions for them to feel safe. I don't speak for or imagine how anybody else feels in any other district, but I think we really have to consider the, the concerns, the valid concerns that teachers have. And it, part of the reason that we didn't initially go with a full back is because we could not guarantee, because of the size of the bodies of the people, and the nature of the schools and all of that, that we could maintain the kind of distance that would, would lead to, or, or morally to a safe environment for our staff as well as our students. And even today, you know, John pointed out at one of the schools, the difference between a kindergarten class and a fourth grade class that's back is the fourth grade class is tighter because they're bigger. And, um, and I think, I would just say, I think, you know, we do have an obligation to our students, and I think we're working very hard to meet that challenge. And we have an obligation to our staff, and I think that until they are vaccinated, um, fully, it's, uh, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that, but we'll do what the board directs, but I, I just have to, I think I have to say that, uh, because that's not insignificant. And, you know, we've worked hard to try to, uh, make sure that, you know, our staff feel supported and understood, and their concerns count for something. So, you know, that's what I'd say.
So absolutely, um, I don't think there's one of us sitting up here that doesn't feel exactly that same way. I think that we are also looking around us at places around the state who are doing it, and while I understand, certainly, I, I mean, I'm doing it, I was doing it myself and have been doing it myself, you know, um, I understand those concerns. I think we're seeing that there's high schools that are back in person, or go- or have been in person, or going back in person, and that the fears, um, are, they're, they're just the, the catastrophic things that people worry about just aren't coming to fruition here in New Hampshire. You know, in our state, we're seeing that this is being successfully done around us, and I, I know we always want to say we don't want to compare to other places, but, you know, if, if they can do it, we can do it, is how I feel about that. Also, um, if everybody's getting vaccinated on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, they do have a measured level of protection from that point already, on top of the fact that we will have mitigation strategies such as our universal masking, which, you know, the kids are absolutely fantastic at, as is the staff, already in place. Just like with the elementary schools, you know, we have Plexiglas, we could probably get Plexiglas, you know, whatever those plans are. I, I really, if I'm being totally honest, I think I like Andy's plan as well, I think I would lean that way as well, just to get a phased-in approach, uh, to K to eight. It always bothered me personally that the fifth and sixth grade, which we are always saying functions on an elementary model, they're on trimesters like an elementary model, they're fully self-contained like the elementary schools, in my opinion, they should have been implemented with the K to four, that's how I felt, but at the time, I knew people were wary, I kind of just went with it. But even just this morning, as I knew the K to four was going back, I was feeling conflicted, because I felt K to six should als- I mean, fifth and sixth should also be going back, as they're self-contained, elementary model, you know, little bit of a different, like, like Andy said, a little bit of a different animal from the middle and the high school where they're switching classes, or, you know, there's other things involved there. But I, there's just, I just even read today about a new study in Massachusetts that was talking about schools who implemented six, they compared, like, over, almost two hundred, like, a hundred and ninety-something schools that had six-foot rules versus three-foot rules for social distancing, and so saw no transmission in schools, and no increase in transmission in schools, right? So I understand wanting to be cautious, that's how I live my life, I'm a cautious person, but I also, um, feel the, the need to start rolling towards, like Andy said, if we're going to get the high school in, I think we have to start at least rolling towards getting fifth through eighth back in. And we've started today, and so, you know, here we are saying like, well, we're gonna be concerned for the teachers, we, we already have teachers back full-time already today, so, with full classrooms, and I get it, kindergartners are different maybe than high schoolers, but I think that's why we roll out a phased approach, and, you know, I'm not sure whether Laurie would be willing to get on, you know, change her motion to, to create a phased approach, but I think we have to start moving towards getting the kids back in school before the year ends in some capacity.
Laurie.
So, uh, Cinda gave us an excellent, um, study to read, it was all studies out of Massachusetts examining two hundred and fifty-one school districts serving, um, millions of students in, in Massachusetts, and the findings were based on science, and the, uh, you can, like Jenna said, you can move to the three foot, and there's not transmissions happening in classrooms, and, um, there's just so, I just have such concern about students' mental and emotional and social health being out of high school, and being out of middle school. That's what I hear in this community over and over and over again, and that's why I made the motion, I think there's more to this than COVID nineteen, there's, there's other things, and that's, I, I feel very strongly, we need to get our kids back in school.
Andy.
See, I, I don't disagree, I mean, and I think that by the time we get through the next few, I mean, the, the stakes in the ground are, you know, obviously to have a plan, I mean, you know, regardless of when the teachers are, are vaccinated and when all that happens, we need to have a plan at the upper elementary level, the middle school level, the high school level, of how to make things work. There, there's no question we need that, um, to roll through this, because I don't think that any of us at the board want to see us stay in the hybrid model in the upper grades through the end of the year, because things are changing, it's dynamic. But part of what I'm thinking is, I don't want us to, I believe it's gonna be harder at the high school level to accommodate some of these than it is at the middle. The middle school, so the, upper elementary school is similar to the, the regular elementary school, so I think it's an easier next step. The middle school is not as easy, but pretty close to easy, because they stay in cohorts within their, within their, um, within their groups, you know, within their, I can't even remember what they call. Teams, whatever, right, um, it's been a lot of times that I had a kid in middle school. But again, they stay together in cohorts versus completely mixed like the high school is. The con- thing that concerns me about Merrimack High School is, if you've been to a lot of high schools, Merrimack High School has hallways that are like twisty little passages that are, that are crazy because of the way we've built it over time, so it's gonna take more thought to figure out what that's gonna mean and how you do that, which is why I do not disagree with putting the plan together, I think we need to have a plan together, but I think we need to make sure it's in different chunks, so the board has some flexibility as how they implement it. So that's, and as far as the date of the twenty-ninth, I mean, obviously, as soon as we can get a plan, that's great, but we need to understand whether there would be something feasible, or maybe we only hear, you know, you know, fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth by that date or whatever, but I think we need to have a timeline, but I'd like to see it staged, not necessarily staged implementation, but segmented in the way it's presented.
Why don't we let administration go back and kind of talk with the leadership team, talk with our teachers, um, and, you know, however they break out what those protocols might look like, what might be safe, I don't care where they would split the, you know, whatever, to your point, Andy, maybe, you know, it's not gonna be necessarily a one-size-fits-all, let them go back and socialize that, brainstorm over it, look at, you know, whatever sa- safety and creative types of protocols that could be put in place, um, and then come back to us in a week, and we can further discuss it and deliberate it.
Do you mean?
Two weeks?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, in the, on the thirtieth.
Thank you.
On the, let me look at the, correct of March. A special, a special meeting.
So the twenty-ninth was a school board meeting, but you have a conflict that night?
No, it hasn't, it's the week, it's one of those weird weeks.
Oh, 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 oh. Okay.
Those weird weeks where there's only two meetings, and there's an extra week before April, so.
Which would mean we may have to do it remotely, um, because we probably wouldn't be able to get this room. Shannon.
So I would have to say that, you know, the motion is to have a plan on the twenty-ninth, and I think that's jumping the gun, and so I'm not, I'm going to be voting against the motion. If you'd like to provide guidance and update thoughts, visions, that, that's one thing, but something that we'd have, you know, a deadline to act on, um, I think that doesn't give you the runway to do an effective job, um, logistically, and also when you consider the runway for families, uh, to put the kids back in April. Again, you know, childcare, all the things that you've talked about, the routine, the lesson plans, all of that, to keep changing and changing and changing, that doesn't give runway, so I'm not supportive of the, um, motion to have the plan. Um, if there's a, a meeting that you feel you can give us good information, I'd be supportive of that, but not, or we would put you, uh, in a position to have to, um, make a pivot. If that's the intent of that meeting to do that, then I am not in support of the motion.
Jenna.
So my thoughts on that are that people need to make childcare plans, obviously, in some cases for before and aftercare, but if we're putting the kids back in school, most people are going to be happy to scramble for a couple of weeks to make that happen, because I haven't talked to many people who don't want their. I haven't talked to many people who don't want their kids. Phasing back in at this point, that the overwhelming communication I get is. That is what people want for their children. And you don't have to scramble to find as much childcare if your child is in school all day. So, I I personally would like to see a plan. Myself, on the thirtieth. Which is why I seconded the motion.
Should we go ahead and call the question?
Yeah.
And take a vote?
Sure.
Okay. All those in favor of having a special meeting next week, Tuesday?
Thirtieth, it's two weeks, right?
Oh, it's two weeks, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's next week, it's next week. Oh, no. It's not, it's, I'm looking at my calendar, it's it's two weeks and a day, right? Fifteen days from now.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
March thirtieth.
Is is that too far out?
Well, we couldn't, I, we we need that time.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One, the motion carries four one zero. Okay, uh, moving on to item number eleven, the annual review of investment policy. Dr. McLaughlin.
So, I'm going to turn to Matt, you see on the second page. Who's reviewed March second, twenty twenty, this is one of the policies that needs an annual review. So, we're just bringing it back uh as we're required to do. Uh, and we just need to read it, and then if the board approves, uh, it can just be uh put back as reviewed. On this date for twenty twenty one, so Matt?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is the requirement of the RSA's and our auditors to just. Read this and review it once a year. So, it's policy DFA investment, the school board authorizes the school district treasurer working in conjunction. With the superintendent and his/her designee pursuant to RSA one ninety-seven colon twenty-three dash A. To invest the funds of the district subject to the following objective standards of care. Objectives, the three objectives in priority order investment activity shall be. Safety, liquidity, and yield. Safety of principle is the foremost objective of this policy. Investment shall be undertaken in a manner that seeks to ensure the preservation of capitalable capital. By mitigating credit and interest rate risk. This will be accomplished by limiting the type of investments and institutions. To those stipulated by statute and fully covered by FDIC insurance or. Collateral approved pursuant to state law. Two, liquidity of the investment portfolio shall remain sufficient to meet all operating requirements that may be reasonably anticipated. Yield, the investment portfolio shall be designed with the objective of obtaining a. Market rate of return throughout budgetary and economic cycles, taking into account. The investment risks, risk con- constraints and liquidity needs. Return on investment is of secondary importance compared to the safety and liquidity. Objectives described above. Standard of care, number one, prudence. The standard of prudence to be used by the district treasurer and superintendent or his/her designee. Involved in the investment process shall be the prudent person standard and shall be applied in the context of managing an overall portfolio. They are directed to use the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, recommended practices and policy statements. Related to cash management as a guide to the prudent investment of public funds. Ethics and conflicts. Of interest. The school district treasurer and superintendent or his/her designee involved in the investment process shall refrain from. Personal business activities that could conflict with the proper execution and management. Of the investment program or that could impair their ability to make impartial decisions. Employees and investment officials shall disclose any material interest in financial institu- institutions. With which they conduct business. They shall further disclose any personal financial institutions with which they conduct. Business. Let's see, they shall further disclose any personal financial investment positions. That could be related to the performance of the investment portfolio. Employees and officials shall subordinate their personal investment transactions to those of the school district. Particularly with regards to the timing of purchases and sales. Three, internal controls, the district treasurer and superintendent or his/her designee. Shall establish a system of internal controls which are, which shall be documented in writing. The internal controls shall be reviewed by an independent auditor annually. Uh, the school board will review its investment policy annually. The statutory references are one ninety-seven colon twenty-three dash A, treasurer's duties. RSA three eighty-three colon twenty-two, public deposit investment pool. And it was last reviewed on March second, twenty twenty.
Okay, any questions? Number twelve, approval of March one, twenty twenty-one, school board minutes, do I have a motion? Made by Shannon, second by Andy. Any updates or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none, that motion carries five zero zero. Now, we've moved on to other um correspondents. I have just a couple that have either gone to meet all of us or um more than one of us. That I, there was the first day of school in Rosh Hashanah that I already mentioned. Um, I got one about the quarantine guidelines, another topic we discussed tonight. One uh person had written regarding a request for town hall, I spoke to her on the phone. And explained what the agenda item was tonight, so um she was going to watch tonight's meeting and then. Let me know if she had any other concerns or follow-up items associated with that. And then there was another one that was requested to use fields over the summer, which I've um directed. Included Matt, Chevonal, he's going to reach out to that um. Person, they wanted to have an agenda item. But Matt's going to reach out and see if there's, um, it sounds like we might be able to accommodate without the need of adding it to as an agenda item. And then um I did get one email personally, which was regarding the survey. Um, and it just had explained that there, um, when it went out. It asked what grades your kids were, and number eight, question number eight, which was. What levels of school are they in, it didn't have the MEEP, this person only had a MEEP student, so it didn't have that as an option, so she just chose kindergarten, but. Just gave us the heads up for future surveys. Any other? Correspondents? Uh, seeing none, comments? I have one. So, I was able to watch the Lynn Lyons webinar called Now What. She's just amazing, and anytime that. I can see her, I mean, she's done a number of things within the district, and this was another one that was very worthwhile. She's a very um engaging speaker. She's funny, um, she totally gets it, and talking about anxiety was interesting, and there was just one thing that kind of stood out that I wanted to just. Bring up in that uh webinar, and, you know, she had kind of talked about kind of what we've been going through collectively in her experiences. And I think I can relate to it as well, is that initially when the pandemic began, there was this fear of missing out. And then people were missing out. And now there's really a fear of returning to normalcy uh for people, and there's a lot of anxiety around that, and she. She added that actually, you know, you you always think that the beginning of the school year is what causes a lot of anxiety for families. But she said in all of her experience, it's the end of the school year, it's filled with a lot of anxiety, so I think. That's just something to bring up, especially in light of. You know, our decisions is, you know, we kind of look to see if we bring kids back, I just, I thought it was really interesting. New business. Lori?
So, the two seventy-fifth committee um did approve um the building of a covered bridge at Twin Bridges. And that committee, again, will be. Um, meeting with the principals of each school because they want to get uh students involved. You know, we're hoping to get, you know, in the high school level, maybe extended learning opportunities where students can volunteer to do some of the. Actual um work on um, you know, fundraising and communication and and those types of competencies.
Anything, any other new business? No, I have one piece of new business. So, I just, I wanted to mention that, you know, as we kind of look as we're coming out of covid strategically. You know, one of the thoughts I have as the chair of the school board is how we need to have the vision for how we go back. And and I know that that's top of mind for administration too, that essentially the pandemic. We're managing, there's light at the end of the tunnel, and we're preparing for how we go forward. And. My my biggest concern is that if. We go back to how we were, we're going to mediocrity. And so. Being able to prepare and use all of the learning that's been done. For better or for worse, you know, there's been a lot of learning with our staff, our teachers, all of us have learned, and even about um. Just the ability to understand adversity. And, you know, how everything is going to change. Not to how it was, and I think we saw one example tonight even, it's something very simple, which is. How do we handle a snow day, you know, so that's only one impact of what we've all been through. So, um, Mark and I met with someone that is a subject matter expert around. Innovative ideas, approaches, and he's working with districts around the state um along these lines, and so we had a just kind of an intro conversation and. We may follow up with additional conversations, but just wanted to let the board know that that happened and. Just kind of the thoughts around that, and, you know, the idea is, we want to be prepared to move forward. Not go back and then try to move forward, we've got to be walking. To not be the old normal, but the new normal, so. Okay, committee reports. Shannon, and then Jenna.
On the eleventh, the professional development committee met, and uh it was an abbreviated meeting, but we went through technology updates and clarified course reimbursement processes. Additionally, um, the meeting was followed by the master plan updates, uh draft document. And with that, the state rubrics were uh attached to that to guide. Our understanding of the updates of the master plan. And um, we will be meeting next month.
Jenna?
So, on. The February ninth, is that right? That feels like it was a long time ago. I think I might have the date wrong, but whenever it was, it was last week. Was that March ninth? What month are we in? March ninth. Good God, okay, March ninth, I knew that didn't sound right. The healthcare cost containment committee met um and finalized the planning of the raffling off of gift cards with the health trust money. To uh staff around the district. So, that has started this week, and uh they're twenty-five dollar gift cards, and so there's various raffles that staff can win, and it's it's really toward. Health and wellness, and this year primarily focused on encouraging. Teachers and, you know, mental well-being and just a little something to give them a boost to their spirits over this during this time.
Okay, any other committee reports? Uh, public comments, there's uh no one in the room here, but online, I think you have one, Shannon?
I do, and my phone fell back to sleep, hold on one second, sorry. It is from Casey Keef at nineteen Miriam Road. And it starts with, good evening, I apologize if this email has been thoroughly discussed during the meeting tonight, however, I'm at work and only have these few minutes to share my thoughts on grades five to twelve. I currently have two children in Merrimack School District, one child at Thornton's Ferry School, my older child is at J Mews in fifth grade. It has been frustrating, to say the least, that her interaction on remote days has been challenging for both the students in her class and the teacher. Her classroom still does not have one of the tripod video cameras that the district spent so much money on, and according to what I'm hearing. There's not the proper hookups in her classroom, and her teacher has told her their particular classroom will not be able to use this video. Her teacher has been using Zoom, and I feel for both the students and the teacher. The connection is not great, and the solution makes it nearly impossible for her teacher to teach and the students to be active learning participants. When she went to J Mews, it was clearly. It was clearly stated at various times that J Mews is still an elementary school and the children will be treated as such. However, that has not been the case at all this year. I wish that the J Mews students were treated. The same as students at Thornton's Ferry, Reed's Ferry, and MES. As these students are not as independent and responsible as children in the middle school and high school. Let alone, I'm sure my daughter's classroom is not the only one suffering from inappropriate hookups and or equipment. I would ask that you consider the option for J Mews students to go back full time and end their suffering and their teacher's suffering, respectfully, Casey Keef. And that looks to be the only email.
Okay, we'll go ahead and sign the manifest, and I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session. For RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, A, B, and C.
So moved?
Motion by Shannon, second by Lori, Jenna, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Lori?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
And I vote in favor, the motion carries five zero zero, thank you and good night.